We'll call the meeting to order. Y'all please rise and face the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Best part. Our most kind and gracious Father in heaven, we're thankful for this time. We're thankful that this time has been set aside that we can come together as leaders of the county and make decisions which are right and proper and good in our side as well as your side. We ask that you give us wisdom to make those decisions in the right way. We ask, Father, that you be with the poor and the needy and be with those who protect and service, as our prayer and prayers hold in hand. Amen.
Before we do the reorganization of the council, I will take a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Tell me.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor for President Second, on Second for Rondale. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. I will now pass it off to Attorney John for the reorganization of the council.
We have two officer positions, the Council President and Vice President. And at this time, I'll entertain a motion for the performance of President. Uh, President Gerald.
I'll make a motion. Keely Stingle be the President and Rondell Bridgewater be the Vice President.
Is there a second to that motion?
I can second that.
That's mine. You don't blink. Gerald Fleming.
Correct.
Are there any other motions? Do I have a motion to close the nomination?
So.
By Preston Second.
Second.
Joe Walker. All in favor of closing nominations, say aye.
Aye.
We have a nomination for Keely Stingle as President, Rondell Bridgewater as Vice President. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. And the option is closed. Turn the meeting back over to you, Madam President.
Thank you, John.
Madam President.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll move on to our yearly appointments. So you should have received an email with the upcoming appointments. And so the first one we'll start out with is the ABC Board. We currently have Barbara Summers as that appointment. Do you have any other nominations for that appointment or would you like to reappoint Barbara Summers to the ABC Board?
Well, kind of like our commissioners said one time yesterday, if they're on there and they have said that they didn't want to be on there, let's go ahead and appoint them and then somebody else. So I'm on name, Barbara.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor to nominate Barbara. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Rondale. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Okay, the next is the Redevelopment Commission. This one, we have Keely Stingle on the Redevelopment Commission. These are one-year terms. And we also have Ryan Watson, which is a little bit newer of a member to that. So I'll now call for nominations for appointments for the Washington County Redevelopment Commission. Would you like to reappoint those or would you like to have new individuals on there?
I'll make a motion. That way you're appointed.
Reappoint. Do I have a second?
Yeah, I have a second.
Second from Gerald. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Keely, you missed one. John made it before that.
Yeah, I'm sure you did. That's why we'll take two meetings. Did you intend to include one of the solicitors, show Ronnie Watson?
Yes.
Was that in the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
I did a vote. I'm just moving around the class.
Yes. John, remind me, it's come back to you. We'll come back to you. Okay, next would be River Hills. And right now, we have Bubba serving on that board. And Bubba, if you're happy with that, I'll take a motion for reappointment. Okay, got a motion from Gerald. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Karen. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, motion carries. Bubba's reappointed to River Hills Board. Okay, next is the Property Tax Assessment Board of Appeals. This is also a one-year term, and we have Judy Schastin serving as the council appointment. Would anyone like to make a reappointment?
I'd like to.
Okay, Preston makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Rondale. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Judy Schastin is reappointed to the Property Tax Assessment Board of Appeals. Next would be the County Park Board. This is a three-year term that is ending this year, and currently, the council appointment is Rodney Coats. And now, I'll entertain a motion for the reappointment of Rodney Coats for the Parks Board.
I'm moved.
Okay, I have a motion from Joe Walker on the floor. Do I have a second? Second from Rondale. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Okay, next is the Washington County Economic Growth Partnership. This is a...
I'm good. I'm good till this end of this year, 12/31/23.
Oh, you're right, okay. We got you there. All right, next would be Solid Waste Management Board. Preston, you're serving on that as well. Michelle, is that...I don't see a date on here. Does that need a reappointment?
Which one?
Solid Waste.
Only because there's seven of them. All the commissioners serve on it, but only one council member. There's seven. I don't really want the opportunity or Preston was active.
I'm good.
Okay.
Everybody's okay there. Good.
So do we need a formal motion for that or no?
Just go ahead.
Okay, with that, I'll take the motion to reappoint Preston onto Solid Waste. Motion from Gerald. Do I have a second? Second from Rondale. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Okay, next is the Washington County Personnel Advisory Committee. This is one that Ben Bowling and John Rebels both serve on. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, let's go back to Plan Commission. Okay, current one, do we need a reappointment for that? It's a three-year term.
Yes, there's the two that we're on is that you talked about...
Well, Plan Commission, that means a three-year term, and Bubba's serving there. Do we need a reappointment or is he...
No.
Okay. Okay, so the next one is the Washington County Personnel Advisory Committee. And we did have council member Ben Bowling, council member John Rebels on those boards. So with that being said, those two positions would be open for anybody on the council who'd like to serve on that. Those are conversations about what's in the personnel policy handbook, working alongside those other policy committee members. Do we have any...anyone interested?
It would be interesting.
Okay.
I would be interested.
I'll make a motion that Joe Walker and Karen Bishop are... What is it all that's at board?
Okay, do I have a second?
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, motion carries. Okay, next we have the Ambulance Service Board. And currently, we have Rondale and Bubba on those two, and we would need to make reappointments on those. Do I have a motion to reappoint Bubba and Rondale? Motion from Gerald. Do I have a second? Preston, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, motion carries. All right, let's move back to Council Attorney. I'll entertain a motion for the reappointment of John Lee as Council Attorney.
So.
Okay, I have a motion from Joe Walker, a second from Preston. Any further discussion?
Motion.
Okay. All right, seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. Please raise your right hand. All those in favor? Motion carries. Michelle, were there any other events?
I don't think so. I think we're down one.
Okay. With that, next on the agenda is the Chief Public Defender, Ryan. He'd like to step forward.
Counsel, I'm Ryan Bauer, Chief Public Defender. As of today, we're today. And I want to thank you guys for the opportunity, thank everyone for the opportunity. I appreciate it. I'm ready to get to work, so let's do that. I have a new position. There's a pilot program available from the Indiana Public Defender Council called Assistant Navigator. And what that person would do...let's start passing out one. What that person would do is go through the programs that are available to parents. These aren't...the Public Defender's Office does a couple different things. We, of course, represent people accused of crimes, adults accused of crimes. This is the secondary thing that we do. Not secondary, just as important, but then that is represent parents that are having trouble raising their kids. These are kids that are in the DCS system, the Department of Children and Families, finding that these kids are in need of services. And those services are many and varied depending on what kind of problems the parents are having. So this Assistant Navigator will work with the parents, work with our office to get them in there, making sure that they've got transportation, that they've got ways to get there, that they have the right services, and they're showing up and they're doing these things. The pilot program is 100% reimbursable. The Public Defender Council, the first two years will pay everything, their debt, their insurance, their salary, their safety, their high bidder, everything for the first two years. And we have a responsibility, Ben, to give a recommendation whether the Assistant Navigator was helpful, whether they helped our clients, whether we got better results using this Assistant Navigator. And if they...if we do give them good results and they are something that we appreciate, then we can talk about it in three years, and they'll be 80% funded with a drawdown each year, less and less funding. So if it doesn't work, the Washington County Council won't be out any money or anything like that, and will have given this a try and had somebody to help. And like I said, these aren't for our clients that are accused of any crimes. They're parents that maybe have addiction issues or something like that. They could have crimes. They could be charged with a crime. But this is just focusing on the children and the kids that are accused of...in the juvenile system, you know, skipping school or stealing from Walmart or something like that. So none of the adult criminal people get anything from the Assistant Navigator. It's only those people, so this will be an attorney. It more likely will be...it could be an attorney, but more likely to be like a licensed social worker, as we're talking about moving on a recruitment hire. It'd be somebody who had some experience at DCS, or like I said, a licensed clinical social worker, something like that. We've...in our grant application, and this is something too, that you may remember Mark Clark, my predecessor, my honorable predecessor had mentioned to you, so we're just finishing up his work here, getting this done, and we think...we think it's a good opportunity.
I see that termination of parental rights is one of the services that we would be providing. Can you talk a little bit more about that? From my understanding with DCS, typically, that takes a very long process already. So with this delay, I mean, if a child is in like a very dangerous situation or bad situation, and they're going through, finally got into the termination of parental rights, do you see this as something that prolongs that process? Or do you see that there could be...you know, I guess explain how it relates to that.
Yeah, it's a great question. And on the TPR side, probably, probably not. By that time, it's been at least 18 months that the kids have been out the house. So that parent has done a really...has not done as well as we had hoped for probably 18 months. They're still testing problems for drugs, or they still, you know, can't find work, or not saying they can't find work, but also can't get transportation, or can't provide for the child in a way that they would need to. But most of the times, it's addiction, at least from what I've seen so far. And so the termination of parental rights, there'll already be a permanent placement determination made, and that'll be adoption, that'll be guardianship or something like that. So they will have the ability to sort of try to pull the parent back, but so often, so often by that time of the time when the determination of parental rights is filed, it's almost, you know, at that point. So they certainly counsel the parent on what it's like. We've certainly asked that they...the parent be able to have...get photographs of the child, you know, write letters and things like that, so have an open option for a situation where they already did some contact, as long as it's not harmful. But primarily, the chins and the juvenile delinquents, you know, the kids accused of doing something.
Couple things. Any other questions from the council?
This, Beach Kirk, you Washington County.
Washington County. Yeah. There are...there were, and that's why we added the juveniles as well. This is the first private pilot program that just does the juvenile delinquents. And because we didn't want to expand it out, we didn't want to work and share with other counties. We thought they would get...they'd use too much hard resources. So we wanted them to be here full-time, and that's what we're going to get for two years.
I've got a little question and one comment. The question is, how the Southwest Bay, do I ever do it, do they grab the 42.5 hours?
That was a little bit less than they're paying in Monroe and what we saw the going rate in this area for a licensed clinical social worker was going to be.
Figure?
Yeah, guys in the board, the council.
The only other comment I've got is, it sounds like it's a good, something that's positive and good, understanding they're nice type, and that's, I think, that anybody that gets hired in that position needs to understand in two years that they're in that position may not be available.
I want to make that clear to them.
I want to make that clear to you. Yeah. Anyway, it's not my stance is, I know I'm going to be here for two more years. I don't plan on adding any more people to anywhere unless we absolutely have to.
Yeah, and it may not. It could be that, whether it's retiring or just the nature of our cases that we have, they're not helpful, and in two years, I say, you know, this person's been balking along, and let's just go ahead and do something else. That's what we'll do. But yeah, I'm going to make that clear that first two years is, you know, more than a lot of people get when we get hired, but still, there's a written date, so. And I'll come back and follow up and tell you how we're doing.
That would be helpful. Gerald.
Ryan, is this a statewide program or is it only a few target counties?
It is. It could be statewide. We would be the third or fourth county in DCS. So we're pretty early, and that's all credit to Mark Clark. He's had a good relationship with the Public Defender Council in Indianapolis and was able to get in relevant.
I have a question. So this, I know, is funded fully by the Indiana Public Defender Commission for the first two years, but we talked about, you know, what happens after two years, and this could potentially be eliminated, but let's go on a best-case scenario that you decide to keep this person. How much of it...I noticed you said it says partial funding could be reimbursed in year three. Can you elaborate a little bit on how much of it could be reimbursed?
We're still negotiating with Indianapolis a little bit on that, but the suggestion is that year three would be they would fund 80% and would ask the county to fund 20%. Year four, 60% funded by Indianapolis, and then 40% by the council here. And that's sort of where they talk about being, if it's good, if it's working, if we're getting good results, I'm going to try to negotiate that and ask that they fund maybe 90% in year three or something like that. They do want to see that drawdown. And I think a lot will depend on how many other counties have deployed Assistant Navigators, what their funding source is in a couple of years, but that's how they want to be, is 20% lower each year.
And if I could speak on that, this would then help the office. That we...what we would pay at that point in time, like if we paid 40% of the actual salary, I believe we would still get 40% of what we paid reimbursed back, like we do with all expenses in the Public Defender's Office.
Yeah, that is absolutely true.
So it would even, yeah, there would be other money coming back to the county of what we did spend, if we had to spend some.
So if the $42,000 salary, if we had to pay, if the county had to pay 20%, 40% of that 20% gets reimbursed, so that's what we have to do for the math.
And I appreciate those comments on that. Like I said, I don't want to be negative about everything. The next word is several years. Right. And that's just speculation, because we were told several years ago that as far as the public defender, that the state was wanting to have every...that they were going to amend the public...the chief public defenders. And that's never happened, and that's why we went ahead and then brought in chief public defender in on that notion that they were going to amend that, and they never did.
Not yet, so.
Not yet. They may, they may, yeah, next year, but that's one of those things that I...but I do appreciate the comments and the honesty, what you think it is, because we have to have a good idea of where we're coming from.
Well, that helps me too with whoever you hired, I can say, well, it's two years, you know, knowing that, you know, watching the pains is important and...
Right, absolutely. And that's why, you know, we've got new members on the board of the council. Some members may not have been here when we went through that. You know, I'm just going to live with that. Thank you.
Gerald had a question.
Do we not have services in place that someone do these things now?
Yeah, almost all the services are in place. A lot of the services are recommended from the Department of Children and Families. They recommend what services to take. What the Navigator would do, because they would be an expert in child development, they'd be an expert in social work, they'd be an expert in DCS, hopefully if we get the best person, they would tell us, hey, I don't think this is the program. I think this is...I think they should take Program B instead. I think the...if we can get a transportation subsidy, we can get them there more often. They'll just help both the lawyer and the client, the parent, navigate the system that already exists, because it's...it can be complex, and for people that are having a hard time, you know, managing work and taking care of their kids anyway, adding more services and programs is tough. So they'll go with the meetings that they have to, and they'll do all those things that we wouldn't be able to do.
Gerald brings up a good point. Like, how does that work with the victim services advocates and, you know, what's currently being provided by the prosecutor's office?
It would be separate from that. It's possible that the victim advocate could be involved, but that would be secondary. It's the main focus of what I call simplified of it. Because it's DCS, there shouldn't be a victim involved. That should take care of it. Now, there can be, if, for example, if it was neglect of dependent or something like that was the basis to take the child, then there'd be a victim advocate on the prosecutor's side, but our Assistant Navigator wouldn't deal with that. That would be directly the prosecutor and the public defender still on the civil side, on the chins side, then they would...they would still do the best they can to get them anger management or whatever programs they need to stop that.
So in that sort of case, say it was a chins case, your client would be the parent?
Mm-hmm.
Sort of the liaison between the different things that we aren't even totally aware of. I mean, Ryan knows a lot of it more than I do.
It's more on the social work side of things that I...the more people...
Best ever the child, that's the parent's book.
So CASA, they just work with the children, don't they?
Yeah, the CASA is essentially the representative of the children.
Okay. So it's the director there.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, really, everybody, as far as I can see in that system, do a really good job on their part of it. This is for us and our parents to just understand and navigate the system. So we're hoping that we rest TPR.
Ryan, when are you expecting to have this decision made?
If possible, if you can give me tentative approval, I'll meet with the commissioners tomorrow, but it's something I'd like to do by the first or middle of February, get somebody get posted and get moving on.
Would this be the first opportunity for the council to review this? I'd like to...
You know, entertain a motion to table it and then have an actual action made next week. Do you feel comfortable with that? Come back to you. All right, I'll entertain a motion to table this discussion. Okay, I have a motion from Rondale. Second from Preston. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries.
It'll come back in February.
Yes, please.
Thank you. Oh, there's one other thing, I'm sorry. And this would be another thing that I'd ask you table in February, is the opioid settlement. There's an unrestricted fund and a restricted fund. I think I can get from the city approximately $5,000 if I can convince the council here to match that fund out of the restricted fund. And what we would do with that, another thing, not for our criminal defendants, but for our parents and our kids, what we call wraparound services. This would be like the first month of rent if we're having housing issues, to get the parents and the children back together. This would be transportation services. We would, you know, pay for a cab to get them to programs or something like that. So it's not to court. It's not anything that we need to make a decision on or that I'm asking that you make a decision on now, but I'd like to go to the city council later this month, see if they're willing to fund just from the restricted fund. And what I say the restricted fund, what that means is, they can only be used for opioid production programs. So this would be an opioid reduction program. This would be our parents that are addicted to drugs, that are having problems that way, and get them some other services and use that funding to get them back to forth again, hopefully working with the Assistant Navigator, so.
And the source that Matt you're talking about is our restricted fund?
Yeah, it would be from the council opioid, legal settlement restricted fund, and then the cities. And I wouldn't ask you to do anything more than I can give the city to do, and I think they'll maybe make the first decision. So that's something to also talk about February.
Yeah, and if you can provide us with something written and the insurance, that would be helpful and help and set it up to all of us.
That's fair. All right, great. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Lee, number two.
All right, great. Do you have anything?
I was just going to invite any new members of the council or existing. If they want to come out to the Highway Department sometime, I'll be glad to show them around, show them our equipment, how we operate.
All right, Michelle, Kyra. John. All right, I'll now open that up for board comments. We'll start with Bubba. First, I do want to welcome the new and returning council members, Gerald and Joe. Thank you all for your service and I'm looking forward to continuing to serve with you and serving with you all in the future. So Bubba?
I don't have anything. I did want to thank Rick and his staff for the job they've done.
Yes.
For on our road journey, the Christmas season. I know they put some of our employees out on the holiday, but they've done a good job getting things cleaned up and people able to be over where they needed to be, so good news to them.
Yes. Gerald?
I'll just make a comment, is I would never feel comfortable, never feel comfortable filling Ben Bowling's shoes. He was fine.
Yes.
Wonderful man for the county, and he still is.
Joe?
I'd just like to comment and say that I appreciate the opportunity to be here and work with all of you, Karen, I'll work with you, Preston, everybody. But I've worked with you.
I can't get rid of that. Exchange it.
Thank you. Rondale?
Just to reiterate a conversation that we have, I've made the suggestion that we're always being compared or making the comment, well, it's a knee-jerk reaction. I think that a lot of times, if we're not for sure on something, it needs to be taken to the next meeting. It gives 30 days for us to check with the other individuals in the county that do get for us to see what, kind of bounce everything around to see the positives and the negatives effect that's on our decisions. Secondly, as the new employee, if we're going to look at races this year, I would see how we're going to be able to add any positions that are, unless they're absolutely necessary. And that's something that, you know, I think that, something that, this year's going to be more difficult than last year. And every year, it seems like it's more difficult than the previous year, the previous year. But we're going to look at some of those things. I think that we need to really think about our issues instead of just voting at that meeting, hang it for 30 days. And especially if it's a decision on an employee, really evaluate that to see, because that will have a negative impact on any races that we're...if we're even able to give races. More than likely, depending on the situation, we're going to do something maybe with positive, but every new person we add is that much taken down in races.
Karen? Question?
I'm just going to say what Rondale is backing up there, that we're just going to have to watch the budget close, and we're going to have to, like you said, make a table for the next month, get us through. I'd be welcome to Joe and Gerald. table for the next month, get us through, and be welcome Joe and Gerald back. So we've got a good team here, I think, we've just got to work together, we've got to be a team, some way we can do it.
I agree with that, and I look forward to serving you all again as president, thank you for that vote, and having Rondell as vice, I really thank you all. You're welcome. All right, Todd, do the commissioners have anything they'd like to share?
Oh, but do we? We've got a little issue that's coming up, and I'm not going to elaborate on it too much, because it's not been finalized. I want you all to, this has happened before, be prepared for Judge Medlock to maybe mandate today it's a holiday, and also our two election days coming up. He sent an email out last, the week before last, indicating that he expected us to pay his employees for today, and the primary election, and the general election, and that's all I'm going to say right now, because we are going to meet with him tomorrow morning to discuss this, we were kind of blindsided by it, so just a good way to bring in the new year, I guess.
And to confirm, that does not align with the approved holiday schedule that the commissioners have set for?
Yeah, just real briefly, I want to remind everyone that holiday pay is not a requirement by any federal agency or state agency. We do this simply as a benefit, and we've always done it as a benefit. This county or any other county in the state of Indiana is not required by any law to pay their employees holiday pay. It's a perk, a courtesy. Now, it's expected that they be given the day off naturally, and then there's, there's been some heated discussions over the years that I've been involved with this about, well, the state does this, and the state does that. Well, we're not the state, we're a county. We have right now somewhat limited funds, and we, the past two or three years, have reduced the number of paid holidays, not because we're trying to be mean-spirited people, but it costs the county somewhere's up to $40,000 a year, a day, excuse me. When we pay a holiday, this is for all employees county-wide, we've got 175 employees, it costs us almost $40,000 a day for a holiday. So in the past two or three years, we have kept the number of paid holidays down to, well, it's listed as 10, but there's actually 11, and I asked Kyra and the girls in the honors office to put your birthday on there, that's something that was done many, many years ago, so we have 11 paid holidays in this county. So it was up to, I think, 15 or 16 at one time. So that's basically it. We did it as a, for budgetary reasons, to save money, since it's a perk anyway, we're not required to do it, and, you know, we, like I said, don't want to be mean-spirited, just because someone else has 16 paid holidays, doesn't mean that we haven't had 16 paid holidays. So right now, it's 11, and we all agree, the three of us commissioners, that we would try to keep it at the same number every year. Now, there are several holidays that, you know, we're having to shuffle around, it's kind of a shell game, so that's kind of it in a nutshell.
So can a judge mandate?
Yes, he can.
For his staff only, sorry.
For just his office.
For just his office.
That's what he's talking about.
And is that something that will be discussed in the personnel policy committee? Is that something like holidays? Are those typically things that are discussed in that committee? Is that strictly a commissioner decision?
No, it's not really a handbook issue, it's strictly, it's, it's the duty, the right of the commissioners to set holidays for the county. It doesn't have anything to do with personnel policy, maybe, but I'm aware of. So he, so you're saying he can mandate this? Yes, yes, and he's done this before.
For just his office?
Yes.
Or should run it in more for salary?
Yep. And I might, I might say one other thing, Phil had contacted the Association of Indiana County's attorney, and it's one of these gray areas, I'm amazed that, you know, we've been a state for over 200 years, and why this has never come up before, but the state says that the commissioners are responsible for setting holiday schedules. On the other hand, a judge can mandate whatever he wants. So there's a discrepancy there, and apparently there's been some issues come up just recently that this, its name's Ryan Hall, Association of Indiana County's, said that recently this has come up, and so we don't know who can do what at this point.
But at this point, every other county employee is abiding by, including the clerk's office that does function on Election Day, are abiding by the county holiday schedule.
That's correct, because we, we did this back in October, we passed this holiday schedule back in October.
Was the judge, was he aware of that schedule then?
Yes.
Was?
Yes.
So you guys are meeting with him?
Sorry. You know, a person has the right to change their mind, so.
Let's hope so. Okay, well, thank you all for your time. With that, I will entertain a motion to.
One thing real quick, I want to welcome Gerald back, and Joe. Put your thinking cap on. We, we need some more good people, and I'm very pleased of this board makeup, we've got some people with experience, and we need some newcomer, new people here, and I know Joe well enough to know that he's not afraid to work, and I look forward to the coming years, and I think we've got a good group here. Don't forget now, you know, don't be shy about picking up phone and calling a commissioner if you have a problem. We've always had a good reputation for working together, as long as I've been involved with this, and I think Michelle can attest to that. You know, there are a lot of counties that have lots of elected officials that they don't get along, and maybe a lot of it's due to party affiliation, but I do want to tell you one real quick story, about four years ago, when we had a fellow from Homeland Security come down, and was giving us a free assessment on safety issues throughout, throughout the county, you know, of all these shootings happening all over the country and everything. It was very helpful, he told us to look at things about, you know, parking in front of the justice center, you know, you need to leave the front row, front row only for employees, because, you know, shooter comes along, you want to give the guy in security ample time to see what's going on, just little things like that, and lots of safety issues. So it was myself, the sheriff, and the clerk, and I think I was on the council at that time, and another commissioner, but there were six or seven of us. And about 30 minutes after the meeting, we stepped out of the hall, and a few of us were standing around, he said, "I'm really amazed at this county." And we just looked at him, "What do you mean? You guys all get along." I said, "Well, yeah." This, this is unreal, he said, "I have never encountered this before. Most counties I go to, someone's always arguing, or squabbling, or saying this, or saying that." I said, "You guys really have something here." And it kind of made me feel good, and I, I thought about that, and I think for the most part, now we don't always agree, but we do get along, and that's very important. I'm finished, thank you.
That same individual I met later, and clearly we left an impression, because he knew exactly the county, and I think he even cited H&R, it's a great place to stop and get a doughnut, so it's just, I think it's a testament to, just sometimes there are complicated, complex issues that we've got to work through, and that can include some tension too, but I think we all work together as a community, and we're here for the better ment of the community. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion for, from Rondell, do I have a second? Second from Karen, all is in favor, raise your right hand. All right, right here.